Good afternoon. The committee is back from recess to hear testimony on Bill 197-37 LS, sponsored or introduced by the Committee on Maritime Transportation, Air Transportation, Parks, Tourism, Higher Education, and Advancement of Women, Youth, and Senior Citizens by request of the Congressman Manhobin Guahan or Guam Youth Congress in accordance with 2 GCA Section 7102, an act to add a new Chapter 10 to Title 11 of Guam Code Annotated relative to establishing a vaping product tax and licensing of the retail and wholesale distribution of vaping products, which shall be cited as a Stop Addiction Through Vaping Excise or Save Act of 2023. I'd like to invite Senator Amanda Shelton and followed by Speaker of the 34th Guam, Speaker of the Guam Youth Congress, Lilly Bench, to provide their introductions.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Buenos. Good afternoon, everyone. And thank you, Madam Chair, for scheduling this public hearing on Bill 197-37, introduced at the request of the Youth Congress. Bill number 197-37 is an act to add a new Chapter 10 to Title 11 of the Guam Code Annotated relative to establishing a vaping product tax and licensing of the retail and wholesale distribution of vaping products, which shall be cited as the Stop Addiction Through Vaping Excise Save Act of 2023. Madam Chair, we introduce this bill, Bill 197-37, at the request of the Guam Youth Congress. The proposal was addressed by our youth counterparts last year in their efforts to help address the alarming data we've all seen based on the Guam State Epidemiological Profile Update for 2021. The report found that electronic cigarette use or vaping is high among our youth. One in four, 26.5% of high school students and nearly one in four middle school students reported current use. The data from the 2021 report was presented together with other findings, including about 6% of the Guam high school students reported having tried methamphetamines; nearly 14% reported using synthetic marijuana; 15.5% reported taking prescription pain medication without a doctor's prescription. In 2019, about 36% of high school youth reported they had been offered, sold, or given an illicit drug on school property. Through this measure, the GYC seeks to establish a 40% excise tax on the wholesale and retail sale of vaping products. The bill proposes annual fees, including $200 for a retail license, $100 for a vending machine license, and $2,000 for a wholesale license. Businesses are required to renew their licenses on June 30th every year and a late fee of $100 to be assessed plus $2 for each calendar day they remain unlicensed. Madam Chair, Bill 197-37 LS requires a licensee who shall not be under the age of 21 to prominently display their license on each licensed premise. With respect to consequences for selling vape products without a license, the bill proposes a fine of $500 for the first violation, a $1,000 fine for the second violation, and a fine of not less than $2,000 but not more than $5,000 in the case of three or more violations. If a person commits three or more violations, he or she would be restricted from applying for a license for a period of at least seven years from the time they were assessed a fine. Bill 197-37 LS proposes to distribute all fees and fines based on the following breakdown: 50% to the Youth Tobacco Education and Prevention Fund, 30% to the Health and Human Services Fund, and 20% to the Department of Revenue and Taxation for enforcement purposes. The bill, as drafted, proposes to assign excise tax revenue based on the following: 25% for the Guam Educational Facilities Fund, 35% for the Healthy Futures Fund, 15% for the Police Services Fund, 15% for the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center, and 10% for the Department of Revenue and Taxation. While Bill 197-37 establishes a foundation for the government to implement and collect an excise tax on vape products, the bill goes further by requiring a stamp to accompany these products as a way to effectively account for their receipt, distribution, and collection of applicable taxes. In summary, the proposed stamp system is designed so that a licensee and the government can responsibly account for the importation and distribution of vape products through the use of stamps. The Department of Revenue and Taxation is required to furnish the stamps, and additional provisions are proposed in Bill 197 addressing issues related to pricing, distribution, accounting, uncollected stamps, unlawful possession, counterfeits, vending of unstamped vaping products, exemptions, and enforcement. While I recognize other measures concerning vaping products, flavored tobacco, electronic cigarettes, and electronic nicotine delivery systems have been proposed by senators, including an outright ban on the sale of these products, the Guam Youth Congress has asked through Bill 197 for the legislature to help deter the use of vaping products by levying a tax on all vaping products on Guam. Bill 197-37 recognizes that if the policy decision by the legislature is to keep vaping and similar products legal, then these products should be taxed, and the funds generated must be prioritized for enforcement, improvements to education facilities, and programs that support public safety. Madam Chair, I couldn't agree more with what the Youth Congress has put forward as their solution to preventing their peers across our public charter, private, and ODA schools from getting anywhere close to vaping products and other vices. Bill 197 is a proposal by our youth for our youth, and I thank you today for hearing this bill, and I look forward to the testimonies that we will receive today. Suzuas Massey.
Suzuas Massey, Senator Shelton. I'd like to invite Speaker of the 34th Guam Youth Congress to proceed with their opening statements.
Hafada, and thank you for this opportunity for our Guam Youth Congress bill to be heard. Bill 197-37 was first introduced in the Guam Youth Congress as Bill 7-34COR, the Stop Addiction Through Vaping Excise Act of 2023, other known as the SAVE Act. And this bill is meant to do just that, save, save our youth from this pandemic of vaping that has overcome our schools, middle schools, high schools, elementary schools. Our bill author, Kayyentoe, who wishes he could be here today, emphasizes that this is a bill that really tried to find a middle ground, though it's not banning these e-cigarettes. It is using the excise tax to provide funds to educate the youth on the harm of these devices. It is educating them on what shouldn't be happening in their schools and how the youth should not be sacrificing their educations to go and have a break for a vape and have these nicotine addictions that are manipulating them and their futures. This bill really aims to make sure that we have a safe future, not only for us but for everyone else on this island, as we're the next ones to lead it. Thank you again for an opportunity for this bill to be heard.
Thank you so, thank you so much, Speaker Bench. So at this time, I would like to actually provide some information. So notices of today's hearing was sent out to Acting Director Marie Lozama, who's here today, Attorney Douglas Moylan, Director Teresa Areola of the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center, Acting Director of Department of Public Health and Social Services, Peter John Camacho, and Lilly Bench, Speaker of the 34th Guam Youth Congress. A fiscal note was received from BBMR on November 3rd, 2023. It states the following: "Bill 197-37 proposes to deter the usage of vaping by levying the tax on all vaping products in Guam, similar to the Tobacco Control Act of 2006, and to deter the sale of vaping products by raising the price to consumers through this tax. The establishment of the SAVE Act outlines the following: general provisions, licenses, issuance of licenses, enforcement, excise tax, and stamping of vape products. Under the enforcement section of the SAVE Act, all fines and fees assessed and collected under Chapter 10 will be distributed and deposited in the following manner: 50% to the Youth Tobacco Prevention Education Fund, 30% to the Human Health Services Fund of Department of Public Health, and 20% to Department of Revenue and Taxation. Under the vaping product excise tax law, all monies collected levied under Chapter 10 will be dispersed in the following manner: 25% to the Territorial Education Facilities Fund, 35% to the Healthy Future Fund, 15% to the Police Services Fund, and 15% to the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center, 10% to Department of Revenue and Taxation." According to BBMR, current taxes collected for cigarettes, cigars, and other tobacco-related products generate revenue, which is then deposited into the Healthy Futures Fund. And based on the revenue, it is unclear whether they are taxed in the same manner as cigarettes, cigars, and other tobacco-related products. Again, utilizing information from prior fiscal years, in the past four years, the Bureau notes that the average collection of the Healthy Futures Fund from 2019 to 2022 is $38.6 million. However, absent information from DRT relative to tax collection specifically from flavored tobacco and tobacco-related products, the Bureau isn't able to ascertain the fiscal impact of this proposed legislation. Okay, so at this time, I would like to invite those that are coming to testify. I'd like to recognize... Okay, Acting Director Marie Lozama, as well as Deputy Craig Camacho.
Hi, good afternoon. Once again, Chairperson Perez, Senator Amanda Shelton, Senator Telo Tidagui, thank you for, for giving us this opportunity to provide testimony on Bill 197-37. In particular, we'd like to commend the bill's intent to provide funding for the prevention and education aspect, you know, of the vaping issue. We also are grateful for the fact that in this bill, it is recognized that the agency could use funding for administrative costs as well as for our compliance and enforcement efforts should the bill pass. I did want to kind of just add quickly to the fiscal note submitted by BBMR, and that is, we currently do not on our GRT3 form have a space, or we don't currently parcel out the, any vaping products. And then that's, it's in, what's happening is it's all lumped into retail sales. Therefore, it is kind of difficult to ascertain the actual number relative to the fiscal impact. And then with that, I'm going to turn it over to Acting Deputy Director Craig Camacho, so that he can provide some highlights that we have drawn up relative to the bill. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just if you can restate your name. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Senator Tidagui, Senator Shelton. My name is Craig Camacho. I'm the Acting Deputy Director of Department of Revenue and Taxation. To add to the director's testimony, again, like the previous bill this morning, we just have a couple of recommendations and suggestions regarding Bill 197-37. Number one, under Section 10102, definitions, the letter I, vending machine, vending machine shall mean any mechanical, electrical, or electronic device that on an approved payment through money tokens, cashless means, or any other form of payment automatically dispenses vaping products. DRT recommends removing this section as DRT does not support vape products being via vending machines. The access to minors, it's almost impossible to regulate if it's in a public area with no, no limits or no controls. Having said that, number two, under Section 10202, classes and fees, we, DRT also recommends removing the annual vending machine retail license as we're not in support of the actual vending machine piece. Section number, number three, under Section 10203, terms like the bill this morning, conflicts with 10204 renewal. 102103 indicates expires 31st day of March. 10204 indicates renewal before the 30th day of June. DRT recommends license expire one year after the date for which it was issued or renewed, similar to tobacco. Our other recommendation is Section 10205, vending machines A and B. Again, DRT recommends removing it as we do not support dispensing vape products via vending machines. Also, Section 10305, unfit person, the director shall not issue a license of any class to any person the director deems unfit to hold a license. Again, DRT recommends removing this section as the language allowing the DRT director to not issue a license to any person whom the director deems unfit is vague and may cause issues if someone challenges their denial of a license. Number six, under Section 10306, application, again, this was discussed earlier, it's the same definition. Upon receipt of an application for a license and the license fee, the director shall investigate whether the applicant and the premises qualify for a license. Rather than removal, we recommend utilizing the same language as discussed earlier during the hearing of Bill 193-37, as this section currently does not specify the criteria of the premises to be investigated. Lastly, regarding stamping of vaping products under Article 6, we recommend removing it and perhaps adding or remending the current tax statute procedure in law under Chapter 6, Article 8 of this title. Since there's already procedure there and everything, we recommend rather than having a separate whole section under this section, perhaps just add or amend the current tax stamping procedures and regulations under Article 8 of this chapter to simplify things. And that will conclude our testimony.
Suzuas Massey to Acting Director and Acting, I'm sorry, Deputy Director of DRT. Next, we have on our list... Is it Fortuna? Well, yeah, well, you're recognized.
Suzuas Massey, Buenos and Hafada, Chairwoman Perez, Senator Shelton, Senator Tidagui. My name is Austin Geismar-Fortuno. I serve as the floor leader and chairperson of the Committee on Rules and the Committee on Education and Youth Affairs for the 34th Guam Youth Congress, and I wish to express my strong support for Bill number 197-37 LS, also known as the Stop Addiction Through Vaping Excise or Save Act of 2023. Again, the bill had been originated from the 34th Guam Youth Congress as Youth Congress Bill Number 7-34COR, introduced by my good colleague Representative Kayyentoe of Fuadre Duane's Memorial School, where it passed in a unanimous vote by the body, sending a message of a united front of youth leaders who wish to propose a solution in addressing the ongoing crisis in vape use amongst our peers. As one of the bill's cosponsors in the 34th GYC, I continue to be deeply concerned about the growing epidemic of vaping among Guam's youth and the detrimental effects it has on our island community. The statistics presented in the bill are alarming and cannot be ignored. With nearly 27% of high school students and almost 24% of middle school students having used vaping products, it is evident that urgent action is needed to address this issue. As members of the Guam Youth Congress, a body that represents the best interest of the youth of Guam, it is our duty to advocate for the well-being of our peers and future generations. Vaping addiction amongst the youth poses multifaceted risks ranging from physical health consequences to social and academic implications. Nicotine, the primary addictive component in vaping products, can have profound effects on adolescent brain development, impairing cognitive functions such as attention, learning, and memory. Furthermore, the long-term health effects of vaping are still not fully understood, with emerging evidence linking it to respiratory illnesses, cardiovascular diseases, and other serious medical conditions. Beyond the immediate health concerns, vaping addiction can also have detrimental effects on social relationships and academic performance. Many young people who become addicted to vaping may experience social isolation, as their addiction consumes their time and energy, leading to strained relationships with family and friends. Additionally, nicotine addiction can negatively impact academic achievement as students may struggle to concentrate in class or experience withdrawal symptoms that disrupt their ability to focus on their studies. Just something to add on my written testimony, I also am, am a student teacher at John F. Kennedy High School, and I have seen firsthand the crisis that vaping is, that vaping has become in our local public schools. Often, the largest infraction in terms of disciplinary issues remains to be possession of these products, and I've seen firsthand how the addiction to these products can really, have really become a detriment to their, to their learning, which should not be so. Also, just wanted to note, right, this is especially troubling in light of testimony on another vape use-related bill by Guam Department of Education Superintendent Dr. Kenneth Eric Swanson, where he stated that the department sees e-cigarette use at its highest in the middle school level, peaking around the end of 7th grade and the beginning of 8th grade. This is definitely very troubling. This, along with other troubling statistics coming out of our public schools, underscored the urgent need for comprehensive measures to address vaping addiction among our youth. While traditional tobacco products have long been regulated and taxed to mitigate their harmful effects, the rise of vaping presents new challenges that require innovative solutions. By imposing a 40% excise tax on vaping products and implementing licensing requirements for their retail and wholesale distribution, the SAVE Act represents a proactive approach to curbing youth initiation and promoting public health. Furthermore, the dangers of addiction to vape cannot be overstated. Unlike traditional cigarettes, which contain a limited amount of nicotine, vaping products often deliver high concentrations of nicotine, making them more addictive and harder to quit. Many young people who experiment with vaping may underestimate the risks and find themselves trapped in a cycle of addiction that adversely affects their health and well-being. Moreover, the marketing tactics employed by the vaping industry, such as flavored products and sleek designs, specifically target young consumers, further exacerbating the problem. Flavors like cotton candy, bubble gum, and mango not only mask the harsh taste of nicotine, but also appeal to adolescents' taste preferences, making them more susceptible to experimentation and addiction. In light of these concerns, the SAVE Act's proposal for a 40% excise tax on vaping products is a critical step towards reducing youth initiation and promoting the public health. By increasing the cost of these products, we can deter young people from starting or continuing their vaping habit, thereby preventing a youth generation from falling victim to nicotine addiction and its associated harms. I believe that the SAVE Act with its proposed 40% tax presents a balanced approach to addressing the vaping epidemic on Guam. It not only serves as a deterrent to youth initiation, but also generates much-needed revenue to support community-based interventions and healthcare services. Therefore, I urge all members of the 37th Guam Legislature, support this critical legislation for the betterment of our society. On behalf of the Youth Congress, I would like to thank Legislative Secretary Amanda Shelton, our Youth Oversight Chair, for introducing this bill to the 37th Guam Legislature on our behalf. I'd also like to thank Senator Sabina Perez and the rest of the committee for giving this bill an opportunity to be heard by the public and for allowing us this opportunity to express our voice for the betterment of the youth. This is one of the many bills from the 34th GYC to have been introduced in the 37th Legislature, and now the second, next to Bill 109-37 LS, to have been referred and heard by a committee. With your help, I hope we could put an end to vape use amongst Guam's youth and get this bill passed by the legislature for the benefit of Imanhobin Guahan, the youth of Guam. Thank you for attention to this matter, and I look forward to the positive impact that this legislation will have on our community. Suzuas Massey, Senator Perez.
Suzuas Massey, Austin. We do have Cynthia Al on the Zoom. So whenever you're ready, Cynthia, you're recognized.
Thank you, Honorable Chair and committee members. Cynthia Al, Government Relations Director for Hawaii and Guam, on behalf of the American Cancer Society, Cancer Action Network. I wanted to start by commending and thanking the Youth Congress for working on legislation they are directly impacted by and wanting their voice to be heard on this important issue. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on Bill number 197-37. The American Cancer Society, Cancer Action Network's position on this bill is similar to 193-39, to invest in comprehensive policies that would strengthen the health infrastructure in Guam to prevent youth from starting to use tobacco and help adults already addicted to tobacco to quit. ACS CAN recommends that all tobacco products, including e-cigarettes or electronic smoking devices, are taxed at parallel rates and regulated in the same manner as all other tobacco products. That includes comprehensive tax increases of $1 or more per pack of cigarettes with a parallel tax on all other tobacco products, including e-cigarettes. To parallel a $1 pack cigarette tax increase for Guam, the recommendation would be to consider an 80% of wholesale tax on other tobacco products. If the legislature considers taxing e-cigarettes as a percent of the retail price as proposed in the bill, 35% retail tax for e-cigarettes. It is important to, that tax increases apply to all tobacco products, including e-cigarettes or electronic smoking devices, at an equivalent rate to encourage people to quit rather than switch to a cheaper product or a product that did not see a tax increase. This will prevent Guam youth from starting to use any tobacco product. Increasing tobacco taxes is one of the best ways to reduce tobacco use. ACS CAN also recommends that all tobacco retailers, including those that sell e-cigarettes or electronic smoking devices, to be licensed and regulated in the same manner with the same license fees and same penalties for violating tobacco control laws. I wanted to clarify that the FDA currently regulates e-cigarettes as tobacco products through the Tobacco Control Act. FDA finalized the rule effective August 8th, 2016, to regulate all tobacco products, saying, quote, "Products that meet the statutory definition of tobacco products include currently marketed products such as dissolvables not already regulated by FDA, gels, water pipe, tobacco, ends including e-cigarettes, e-huka, e-cigarettes, vape pens, advanced refillable personal vaporizers, and electronic pipes, cigars, and pipe tobacco." Tobacco companies know what works to reduce tobacco use. That is why, over the last few years, Big Tobacco has been working hard to addict future generations to protect their bottom line and create new categories of products, such as vapor products and nicotine products, to exempt e-cigarettes and other tobacco products from effective tobacco control laws. ACS CAN supports regulating e-cigarettes in the same manner as other tobacco products, and the most effective way to do this is to include them in a comprehensive definition of tobacco products. All top causes of cancer deaths in Guam are tobacco-related and contribute significantly to healthcare costs. Cancer mortality data highlights the critical importance for, of further reducing tobacco use in Guam. By implementing comprehensive policies and best practices, we can reduce the toll of preventable cancer and chronic disease in Guam. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on Bill 197-37.
Suzuas Massey, Cynthia. And then we also have Bistra Theseus and Janice, if you would like to come forward and provide testimony. You are recognized, Bistra.
Hafada, my name is Bistra Mendiola, registered voter in the District of Cholampago. And again, I apologize for wearing shades for medical reasons, for the record. I'm here to commend the youngsters that came up with the bill. However, I must oppose strongly for a few reasons. And first and foremost, as a representative of the vape industry, I do understand... And first and foremost, as a representative of the vape industry, I do understand the major difference in the product and what the economic repercussions must be. If you could refer to this presentation that I submitted earlier, I don't want to go over it in greater detail than I should be, but clearly there is a huge difference between a traditional tobacco cigarette and electronic nicotine delivery devices or vapes. The cigarette itself hasn't changed for about 100 years or so, maybe longer. It is still a tobacco leaf wrapped in paper. It has currently filtered, back in the day wasn't even filtered, but today is filtered, and it's burned. And the combustion of that tobacco leaf produces over 9,000 chemicals or volatile organic compounds, which are the cause of cancer. According to the FDA, the CDC, including the WHO, nicotine itself is not the enemy. Nicotine is a substance, it is highly addictive. However, it is just as stimulant as caffeine. And this is not me saying it, this is the most famous authorities in the world that study nicotine. There's a plethora of studies and, how to say it, medical research, specialists who actually dedicated their entire careers into studying cancer and nicotine, and they themselves also agree that nicotine by itself is not the cause of cancer. On a different note, me as a parent, I have two school-wide children. I do not condone substance abuse, just like any other good parent out there that truly cares about the next generation. I cannot agree that children should be abusing substances. It doesn't matter whether it's alcohol, tobacco, cannabis, drugs. They shouldn't be bringing guns to school, but yet 4% of them are bringing guns to school, and this is according to that 2019 report, you know, we're referring to over and over. The issue why children are abusing substances is a very complex issue. And unfortunately, from other jurisdictions, countries, we do see that sometimes we make the mistake to highly tax a certain product without taking into consideration that this is a product reserved for adults. And at the end of the day, the adult taxpayer will be carrying the burden of that high taxation. On a different note, if you take a look, for example, smuggling of tobacco, I did mention last time I was here, there was a report by one of the, I think in Massachusetts, gosh, I have so much paperwork, it's not even funny. The annual report of the multi-agency illegal tobacco task force by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, they reported that indeed tobacco smuggling is a huge problem, but it was stemmed from high taxation, including the full mental ban and electronic nicotine delivery devices in that state. Same problem occurs in Canada. I recently watched a documentary where they examined the illicit trade of tobacco. Why is that occurring even? Because tobacco was overly taxed in Canada, and people would go into the Indian Reservation, smuggle out super-cheap tobacco products, and bring them back into Canada. So when we want to protect the future, let's take into consideration every single aspect of the issue. Why is it happening? Where is it happening? And what can be done? We just discussed in the previous hearing that there are other ways of tackling deterrence. Because if you ask me as a mom, again, I don't want to see any child experimenting with substances, but also we're seeing repeat offenses, and that is true. I have been following the publications and also the testimonials that came before you, and this is a problem. And I gave as an example the broken window theory, that if we don't punish the minor offenses, then we're going to have a huge problem at the end of the day. These children think that if there is no punishment for the minor crime, then there won't be any punishment for a serious crime later on down the line. And the crime statistics are also a testament to that. So how can we create a balanced approach to this whole issue? First of all, let's take a look at what the product is, how the product is being manufactured, how it's being distributed, because this is a factor that also needs to be considered when we're talking about taxation of a commodity, because obviously this is a commodity and it's quite popular one. And if we overtax it, the other unintended consequences will be, there will be people reverting back to smoking, or they will be importing it from elsewhere, because we know that there are a myriad of websites out there that can ship to Guam, and indeed, that again will create a loss of revenue. There are so many ways that this issue can become more complicated than we should make it. So I do agree with the taxation of the product, yes, I do. But taxing it the same, at the same rate as tobacco, will create an economic disparity between the two products. And Tobaccoonomics reported, which you will see again, this report by this nonprofit organization, Tobaccoonomics reported that when there is this disparity, the shift in reverting back to smoking is there, it's visible, and unfortunately will happen, as it has been happening for many years since the research started. So do we want people to actually revert back to smoking? Do we want the people who already are nicotine users, regardless of what the product is, go to the more harmful form of usage? Absolutely not. Our hospital cannot handle that, because we all know that we have too many diseases out there that are tobacco-related. So if we take away, if we make less accessible a product that is less harmful on the continuum of risk, and earlier I did submit one of the charts where it showed clearly by research where the electronic nicotine delivery devices stand on the FDA scale of continuum of risk. And if we tax it same as tobacco, then we're clearly saying, well, if that product, because it has a nicotine, it is just as dangerous as a nicotine replacement therapy product, which is the nicotine gum. Does it make sense? No, absolutely not. Again, this is not the same product, and yes, although it has a nicotine, it shouldn't be taxed because of this. Now, you also will, let me go back to this, you also will notice the recommendations that we placed in, and we did do a very comprehensive research on the safety, efficacy, and taxation and public policy across the globe, including here, and you will receive, again, the 100-page report that we submitted on a different bill, but it is a very comprehensive study that we did, and turns out that there are other ways to deter youth use, there are other ways to tax the products, and the economists actually do recommend that this product is taxed at the POS system, because there are many ways that businesses may avert from paying the correct taxation. There are many ways to escape the correct way of collection. Due to price manipulation, invoicing manipulation, we already see something similar happening in the Philippines, where I've heard, you know, from colleagues in the industry that that product is taxed at wholesale, and there are manipulation of the invoice prices where the Philippine government is actually losing revenue. So do we want to encounter this product, I mean, this problem? No. So we're recommending that this novelty product is taxed, again, at the POS system, and it will be visible to the customers at the end, because they can actually see what is being taxed and how much exactly they are paying for the tax, because at the end of the day, the taxpayer is the one that will be sharing that burden. Those are the major highlights, but I also wanted to comment on one of the previous presenters here. I appreciate the concern, but let me make it clear, for the record, that nicotine and adolescent brain, I agree. However, when you're 21 and older, you're an adult, and then, again, the CDC also said that the adolescent brain develops up to age 25. So if we continue to bring the same argument, I will argue, well, if you can go to the Army at 18, or if you can buy alcohol, cannabis, if you can vote at a certain age, then where do we put the adolescent brain development? So let's stop with this, please. At the end of the day, because we're here to discuss the youth deterrence, and the other big presentation that I had was the statistics of the region, which clearly shows that, again, this is a much, much complex issue, then it could be summarized in a few paragraphs or just a short testimonial like this. What we're seeing in the region is that, in a country where there is a super-high taxation, such as Palau, where Palau is being taxed at 71% for tobacco specifically, the youth there still smoked at 40% rate back in 2017. It went down, but because there was a popularity of other products that came out, and that rate went down to 20. Now, after the switch to a more stricter policy, we may see how exactly this substitution will work, and I'm afraid for the people of Palau, where they might experience those higher rates. I recommend, I gave, not recommend, I gave a very good example with the Philippines when it came to their youth. Their youth can access the store and buy at 77%. They are not being stopped by, you know, anyone out there purchasing, and yet they have the lowest ends and cigarette combined usage in the region. So why is this happening? There is a lot of, there's a lot of factors that contribute that, and one of them is our parenting styles, how well we deal with certain issues, and I will, again, revert to the UOG study that was done last year, and it was called Types of Offers of Combustible Cigarettes, E-Cigarettes, and Bitter Nuts Experienced by Guam Youth. It's a very good read, and I'm going to basically summarize it, that unfortunately, what contributes to this epidemic, the so-called epidemic, because actually I'm seeing decrease in tobacco use in general, not an increase, the adults are facilitating, adults like uncles, aunties, grandmas, cousins, et cetera, siblings, and they're the ones. And just yesterday, my staff, again, witnessed the same thing happening. Adults came into our shop, purchased the product, went back to the car, gave it to adolescent in the back of the truck. And we will be submitting to you every single piece of our wall of shame that we've collected for you to witness that the problem is not, it's not the industry by itself, the problem cannot be solved by higher taxation by itself, it has to have a very well-rounded and balanced approach. And thank you very much for allowing me to testify in front of you today. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Mendiola. Next, we have Janice.
Hi, my name is Janice Mendiola. I'm very grateful the Youth Congress has presented a bill to try and address the youth epidemic. Unfortunately, I have to oppose it, because first and foremost, the legislative intent of the bill suggests that raising, or in this case, creating an excise ends tax in parity with other tobacco products will prevent youth from possession. First and foremost, it is illegal for a minor or anyone under 21 to purchase. To say that if you create a 40% excise tax on vaping particularly, is to say you condone the sale of vapes, because if you put it out of reach by increasing the tax amount, therefore, they will not purchase it. All right? So it's a contradiction in and of itself, on the very, very face of the intent. Secondly, there is a UOG class study that was conducted in November 2023, which interviewed middle-school students. And as you know, Dr. Swanson had mentioned that, you know, that's the highest number that middle-schoolers have taken over the high-schoolers. Well, this UOG class study in November 2023 and published stated that the middle-school students were obtaining these products from family members. So in these Guam epidemiological surveys and studies that even in the legislative intent that it establishes that there is an epidemic, this study is five years old. In fact, it's a 2019 survey. Now, I'll have you note, I did look at the surveys submitted to the CDC and noticed that Guam does not have a 2020, 2021, 2022, nor a 2023 updated study. Well, the response that I got when I asked Dr. Net David why we don't have any more updated surveys or studies is because, in one word, COVID. Well, as you know, in COVID, businesses were shut down, closed. People couldn't travel, move around. So how were these students, youth, obtaining these products then? If stores were closed, businesses were closed, people couldn't move. Clearly, that would demonstrate the suspicion that supports the UOG study in November 2023 that family members were facilitating these products to minors. Now, so how else were the youth getting the vapes? Well, it's pretty clear, family members. As to the surveys, as to why it stopped in 2019 and we still haven't continued even after COVID, raises a question. Why don't we have any updated surveys to affirm Dr. Swanson's statement that middle-schoolers have taken over high-schoolers? Where are they getting that information from? Is it based on the possession infractions? Where is it coming from? Because we're using outdated information, and we know that in November 2023, they found out how they were getting it. Now, let me just talk about the youth surveys, because it's a standard form survey, and in the survey, one of the unique questions that is asked is, how were the students or the youth obtaining these products? Well, wouldn't you happen to know, those are all omitted, meaning left blank, not even an asterisk to indicate why it was omitted. It was intentionally left blank. So if UOG can do a study that determines how the youth is getting it, why can't the submitted surveys contain that information, how they're getting it? Why is that? And then, lastly, because this bill lacks scientific data showing that the combustible tobacco and ends are the same product, absent of this evidence showing combustible tobacco and ends are the same, parity taxation is not a supported solution, because it is generalizing the word tobacco, when clearly there is scientific data, information that says otherwise. You have nicotine replacement therapy, which is nicotine patches, nicotine gum, nicotine aerosol sprays, and many doctors, 86% of doctors, have gotten it wrong that nicotine is the cause of cancer. Well, why would the FDA sell nicotine products and administer it for cessation then? It's a contradiction once again. And then, lastly, I'll leave you at this, why would the American Cancer Association not completely ask for a complete ban on all tobacco products? Does that have anything to do with the Tobacco Master Settlement Agreement? Because then that would be a conflict of interest now, wouldn't it? Thank you.
Thank you, Janice. Is there anybody else that would like to provide testimony that hasn't? Okay, so I don't see anybody. We're going to start with the questions on the panel. So one of the things, so we have two bills, and, you know, of course, there's other bills before the body that deals with licensing. I guess if we can start off with the definition. So Cynthia, are you still on Zoom?
Yes, I am here.
Okay, so you mentioned in your testimony regarding the FDA definition of tobacco products, which includes ends and other things. And so I think- And so I think this is one of the areas we need clarity on when we're trying to decide on moving forward or how to amend these bills, for instance. So I know there's a lot been said that nicotine is different from tobacco, but the definition within the FDA includes nicotine products. Can you just reiterate that? And I just want to then ask the panel about that particular definition. You know, whether we can agree on that definition because it's an all-encompassing definition.
Right, so in, I, so in what I shared during my verbal testimony, that is me just commenting that FDA does look at e-cigarettes as part of tobacco products. We do have a definition of tobacco products and e-cigarettes that is recommended by the Public Health Law Center, which we would recommend as a model definition of tobacco products. Because every time regulation has passed in other states or jurisdictions, the tobacco industry would come out with new products or rename products and try to reintroduce those products as products so that they don't have to follow the laws that have passed in those states or jurisdictions. But I can definitely, I just, in my testimony, it wasn't necessarily a definition, but just that the FDA recognizes that e-cigarettes and is part of, is recognizes FDA as a tobacco product. And I can, and reread that to you. So FDA finalized a rule effective August 8th, 8th of 2016 to regulate all tobacco products, saying that products that, so this isn't their definition, but this is a statement that they said. Products that meet the saturatory definition of tobacco products include currently marketed products such as dissolvables not already regulated by FDA, gels, water pipe, tobacco, ends, including e-cigarettes, e-huka, e-cigarettes, vape pens, advanced refillable personal vapors, and electronic pipes, cigars, and pipe tobacco. But what I can do is I can look that up and send that over to the committee, their definition of tobacco products.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to then ask the panel. Are, what is your stance on broadening the definition to include those products yet to be developed? So let's say, I think there was many suggestions provided by the American Cancer Society. Because I think the definition is really, really critical, right? If we're going to enforce something, we want to make sure, you know, it's covered. So maybe I can, I just can go down the line in regards to, do you accept a broader definition? Because I know here it says ends, right? Electronic nicotine delivery systems. But apparently, that doesn't cover everything from what I can gather. So maybe I can talk to, ask DRT, what is their position on the definition of being a little bit broader than ends?
Well, even as, we're still learning this industry too. And I kind of like the fact that you put on what is yet to be developed there in your comment. But I'm just reading it. At the end of the day, whatever the committee agrees on and is passed as the definition, that's what DRT will end up regulating and enforcing.
Because the broadest definition allows for even aerosols that doesn't state it has nicotine, but as testified before, that there were cases where it wasn't claimed to have nicotine, but it had nicotine in it. So it basically allowed for more flexibility, just to be more transparent about that. So that's what that definition does. It opens it up to other, other things. Okay, what about the Guam Youth Congress? What is your position on the definition? Do we need to change ends to something else, a broader definition? Or you're satisfied with this definition?
As we've seen in the past years, in the past decades, that vapes and electronic cigarettes have grown in popularity. The definition have changed continuously. It keeps changing every time a new product is released. So I think having a broad and opener, more open definition to allow for that kind of change, especially in the future as these new products keep being released. For example, as you were saying, the aerosols, which still don't even, aren't even clarified if they do have the nicotine in them or not. I think having a more broad definition would definitely be applicable in this situation since it is applying an excise tax.
Austin, do you have any comments?
I'll just, I really echo the same sentiment as the speaker had stated. I do agree that affording the broader language allows, affords the flexibility, especially for the enforcement agencies, that, you know, we don't want to be a step behind the game, especially, you know, when the industry is coming up with these products that are constantly changing, constantly modernizing. But yes, I do agree that the broader language helps. Thank you.
Thank you. Bistra.
Okay, so the question is how to define ends and include a broader definition for ends? Or is it regulated?
Yeah, so basically, to be more in line with the federal regulations, I believe, tobacco. So they define tobacco products as more than just tobacco.
Well, they, yeah, their deeming rule included ends. Before that, it wasn't. It was just related to any traditional tobacco leaf products. So after, I believe, 2009, they included the ends product. Originally, they excluded synthetic nicotine. But then obviously, they had to include it because there were manufacturers that included synthetic nicotine claiming it was tobacco-free because nicotine wasn't derived by the tobacco plant. Now, are we going to tax the ends in this bill? Or we are going to tax the nicotine in general? Because that in itself is a whole different animal. I just came across a product that caught the attention of the FDA and was nicotine toothpicks. So how are we gonna, how are we gonna catch, how are we gonna catch this? I mean, if we want to tax the vape industry because they are bringing in a product that is classified as electronic vapor product, then let's focus on that. If we need to change definitions at a later point, if there is anything that will prompt that, let's revisit that. But currently, we're discussing that youth is picking up electronic nicotine delivery devices? And this is what the discussion is. Because if we broaden it today, that definition may change tomorrow on federal level. I really cannot predict what will happen. And also, the previous suggestion the previous panelists did regarding electronic smoking device, that encompassed the cannabis devices that are used to vaporize the liquid containing cannabis. So are we going to include cannabis in the same category? I mean, it doesn't make sense, really. So let's just stick with what's on federal level. I'd say that, because Public Health Law Center has their own theories about certain things. But let's stick to what's on federal level for now. And let's not change the definition because Congress authorized FDA to deal with this issue, not Public Health Law Center.
Okay, Janice, do you have any comments on?
Okay, no, no, I get it. You know, it's, 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 it's new for some people, but this has been around for already 20 years. I'm sorry. It's as simple as going on Bing or Google. But the FDA received authority to deem any product a tobacco product. This is why you're getting this contentious view of being broad, because we want to name it smoking. You know what I mean? And these are not scientific terms that describe what components are. We cannot say a car is a car without tires or an engine. These are, these are intrinsic parts that make up a device. Which is why even in the, in the definition, it even states coil, filter, pod. So to be too broad, okay, is to now get into the finite details of components. You want to avoid that. So what I want to say is, there's already a Fifth and Eleventh Circuit Courts, federal courts, that have already determined these things to include the FDA, because of the Administrative Adjudication Act that they violated, have made it clear, electronic nicotine delivery systems. This is where the tobacco comes into the deeming rule by the FDA to say, well, I'm the FDA, I have a deeming rule, I can deem this product a tobacco product. We cannot deem a cannabis product as a tobacco product because, again, the composition, the scientific composition is totally different. So we don't want to broaden something only to find out, we have to retract it, knowing already in courts that they're accepting this term to include the FDA's references. These are, these are factually available. It's been around 20 years, they're factually available, and it's been debated. And I just, I just want to help and try and clarify it because if you say electronic smoking device, you're encompassing any type of product that can be inserted into an electronic delivery system. You see what I'm getting at? Electronic delivery system can compose of any type of liquid, which includes cannabis. So, so really, you know, if we overly broad and generalize this, we're, you're going to start to pull in some other industries as a result of it. And you'll have an unintended consequence. Sorry, thank you.
Thank you for that. So I'm going to ask this question of the DRT. So what is the excise tax, if you can remind us, for cannabis?
It's 15% at the wholesale level. I forget the actual volume weight, Madam Chair, but I know it's 15%. I just have to verify the amount at the wholesale level.
Okay, and is there a retail excise?
No.
Okay, just one, okay, thanks. Yeah, so that's another difference between the bills, right? There's, the one bill was the point-of-sale, this one taxes both wholesale and retail. Is that a, is that a double taxation issue? This is questions for DRT. Do you see that as a?
We'd have to go back and verify that, ma'am, but we did have a discussion on that this morning.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, so then for the Guam Youth Congress, if you, if it was a double taxation issue, which one would you tax? Would it be the wholesale or the retail? If you had, were given a choice?
I would say it would be the retail.
The retail, okay. So I know we've had, you know, difficulties with the enforcement of the stamps, or sorry, and even the enforcement of the tobacco taxation. You know, considering it's now, I mean, there's, there's push for retail taxation. What is, what is the difference for DRT? I mean, is this something that you thought about in regards to wholesale taxation of tobacco-related products or retail? I mean, was there a discussion on that?
For tobacco, no. We were just discussing this particular bill. But, you know, I, again, going back to the ends or, you know, even the regular EDS, you know, right now, what's happening is it is included. And I guess this goes back to who sells it, right? It's not just the vaping shops, it's also the gas stations, it's also the mom-and-pop stores and so forth. So right now, what's happening is on the GRT form, it's included in retail. So it's lumped together. We have no idea, there's no parcelling out of these particular products. So I guess, you know, should this bill, or even the previous bill, you know, come into law, then of course, we're going to have to take administrative steps to kind of parcel that out. And it would be for the, for the wholesaler or the retailer to kind of indicate that on the form.
So in regards to enforcement, which one is easier to enforce? Is it the wholesale side or retail side? Because I imagine there's just, there's more retailers out there, so that would lead to more?
Yeah, I mean, compared to the amount of wholesalers right now versus retailers, our chances would be better at the wholesale level, just based on numbers. And the amount of establishments we'd have to inspect or audit of the books.
Did you want to add anything to that, Acting Director? Okay, yes, Bistra.
Okay, so this is where we need to understand how the vape products are imported into Guam and where and how they're being transferred. So as a vape shop, I am not a wholesaler because the current law does not allow me to be a wholesaler and a retailer at the same time. So are we going to monopolize this industry again if we tax, if we just allow wholesale taxation, importation? It doesn't make sense, right? You understand what I'm saying? So there are wholesalers out there, but the majority of the vaping products are being sold at a brick and mortar standalone stores. So because of the current Tobacco Act on Guam, we cannot hold two licenses at the same time. Then what would do? You know, if we tax at a wholesale level? How was that going to happen, right? And then one more issue that I did bring up a while back. It was regarding the stamping, also the way of taxation will burden both actually their agencies and us as a businesses. And what will happen is, let's imagine that we import a device, we get taxed at port, like port of entry, for example. Let's say the Guam Customs at the airport or Guam Customs at the Port Authority. Now, I will be taxed based on the invoice. Like, let's say I have 1,000 pieces of this product, this is your rate, and this is how much tax you owe. Well, because this is an electronic product, at least 10% of our products sometimes comes defective straight out of the factory. So how, what mechanism will be put in place for me to be reimbursed at tax? Now, if I sell it at a retail level and a customer says to me two days later, madam, this device is defective, can I exchange it? I can do the exchange, and that will be reflected in my end-of-the-month sales because the POS system is capable of doing that quickly and very easily. So those little intricacies that people outside of our industry do not understand, that please consult with us, our industry, because we can tell you, we can tell you what's going on in the real-life situation. Everything in theory is perfect, it's wonderful. But because it's not a perfect world, we need to consider what's actually the real-world experience of the people that are dealing with this product. So again, I implore you to talk to us and ask us more questions because there are many ways out there that could be detrimental to the endpoint that we're here. We're trying to, we're trying to improve youth access, but let's do it the right way. And the more you know about the industry, the more you know about a product, the better that solution will be.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so I imagine that the same issues that we're facing with tobacco, we're going to be facing with, with ends products. And so I think, you know, we really need to, to fix that system. And, you know, whether we go from wholesale taxation or retail taxation, that doesn't necessarily solve that problem. Okay, and then regards to the amount of taxation. So there's differing views, obviously, with the two bills. And I think this also comes to enforcement as well because maybe, Bistra, you can tell us, you know, you know, companies often provide the constituents, right? Is it provided in the ends products as far as constituents' components, percentage-wise of nicotine?
Are you referring to, oh, I'm sorry, are you referring to the percentage of PGVG versus how much percentage of nicotine, like the ingredient? Yeah, yeah. That, those are labeled, and there is a mandatory labeling law that requires us to carry those percentages of what's in the product and what is the percentage of the nicotine. And we also are required by the FDA to put a warning label that this is an addictive product. So yeah, those things exist.
Yeah, so one of the things that have come up in the discussion is that there's increasing levels of nicotine in these products. Is that correct? Is like, there's, so let's say a person purchases the vape product. Is there like a very significant difference between? a very significant difference between one product versus another as far as concentration?
Concentration or the percentage? Because...
Concentration.
Well, the electronic nicotine-delivered device is designed to provide a various level of nicotine percentage as a whole of the solution, of the illiquid. And this is where you can have anywhere between 3 mg to about 50 mg. More than that, you can't really require, because that was way too much. Normally, the 50...
Did you say 5-0 or 1-5 milligrams?
5-0. So it starts from 3 mg per, 3 mg concentration up to 50. Why is that? There is a very good explanation why. When a tobacco smoker comes from the regular tobacco cigarette, they need that higher dosage to gradually step down. And we have customers that have been doing this since day one. They start on a 50, and then they lower their nicotine consumption down to 3. And we've had even people, like you heard last week, that actually went to zero. So that is why. It's not an increasing, the concentration is not increasing, at least at the time for I've been in this business since 2017, we've had those different dosages to serve the purpose of coming off of a cigarette at this 50 mg, going down, down the line, just like a step program or the nicotine gum. You know, it starts with a higher milligram and then goes down.
Yeah, so that's a concern, because if it gets into the wrong hands, let's say the youth get ahold of the 50 mg, that's their first-time exposure. I mean, is there a way to tax something so it's based on the amount, so then, you know, it's higher taxed? So that would be a way to limit it, in a way, it's limiting the harm.
What is the harm? Are we specifically talking about the youth?
Yeah, and specifically, you know, basically, the idea is that in order to prevent access, taxation is one of the recommendations, and if we can base it on concentration, I think, the higher the tax...
I have never seen a study that supports that. I understand where you're coming from, however, let's remember that this product is strictly for adults to use only. So if we create, again, a disparity in price points, that will create another problem. That particular higher-tax product, if it's a 50, people will just not, won't buy it. So there will be a different, there will be less of that and more of that. I mean, price elasticity is a basic economic principle, so we need to consider that as well. But again, let's remember that this is a product that should be in the hands of adults. And if we're trying to deter youth access, let's concentrate on how to tax it versus if this gets into someone's hand, it shouldn't be there. And let's consider the previous bill in discussion to create more deterrence via different methods, instead of concentrating just simply and solely on taxation. Because at the end of the day, in this high economic inflation that we live in, I believe the many, many adults out there that are paying their bills, mom and dads, will be not very happy with a higher taxation, because simply we cannot put the burden on the consumer. Our pricing has been going since 9, like, a dollar back in 97 was a dollar, and today is less than 45 cents. So you can imagine what we're talking about here. Can we place that additional burden, unnecessary burden, mind you, because this is an adult product, shouldn't be in kids' hands in the first place? And beyond that, tax it? Yes, absolutely. It's a nicotine product, should be taxed, okay? But don't overtax it because of certain issue that we've been discussing. They shouldn't be using it anyway. So using this argument to heavily tax that product, I don't think it's fair to the taxpayer.
So this is a DRT. Have you done any studies in regards to concentration and taxation? Is this something that you've looked at?
No, we haven't. Concentration of this particular product? No, we have not.
Considering there's a wide range, we're talking, what is it, more than tenfold? Tenfold concentration. So that's a concern, I think, for me. Is there, let's see, do you have any thoughts on this, Lilly or Austin?
I think, knowing that the concentrations go from, you said 3% to 50%, at first I heard 15, and when it was clarified that it was 50, it kind of caught me off-guard.
Sorry, I think it was 3mg, right? 3mg to 50mg.
But that's the variation of the market, so...
Okay.
It is there, so I cannot tell you who's consuming 3 or 50. I mean, who is...
Okay.
But taxing based on the concentration of something that's 50mg should be taxed higher, if you're going to pay for that much more nicotine. I think exploring something about taxing with the concentrations would be something to look at.
Okay. Cynthia, are you still there? If you can...
Yes.
Do you have any thoughts?
Yes, I do. ACS Cancer Action Network does not recommend various levels of taxation for nicotine, because there's no way of testing whether or not the label that's on the box actually is what is in the product. There is, you know, that would require a lot of enforcement work for one of your agencies to do, to test every single product, to make sure that what is being labeled is actually what is being sold. Plus, it would become, it can become a problem for the Department of, I guess, Taxation to verify that the correct taxes are being paid on that product. It's easier if, for the tax collections, to be able to just have like one, one standard percentage of, that's in that category, versus like having to have like multiple different tax levels. That is just our recommendation.
Okay, thank you. I think these are my key questions for now. I just want to open it up to the floor. Thank you for your responses. Senator Shelton, if you have any questions. Senator Tadequie, if you have any questions to the panel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And you've asked quite a bit of questions that covered most of them that I had. Good questions, thank you. However, you know, I do know that, let me, I do have one, though. Revenue tax was brought up earlier, about any forms that you're going to have to create to add on to the, you know, vaping or certain tax, anything that you have to do there on your end? Like creating new...
So we'd have to take our current GRT-3 form, and likely just add another section for the product.
Other than that, is there anything else?
Yeah, just to add, that's at the wholesale level. If it's decided that we're going to tax at the wholesale level, that'll be amending the GRT-3 like the director mentioned. If it's decided that it's going to be taxed at the retail level, then we'd have to amend the GRT-1.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, that sounds good. So that is going to cost, it's going to have a substantial cost to that, and that's one of my concerns. That's why, you know, 193 addresses that. This gives you a lot lower amount of funding to enforce, as well as to provide the products that are needed, or not products, but the changes in your forms.
That will also include our online forms, the online filing, and the Power 7 as well.
Right, okay. You know, definitions, to me, at this point, I think, you know, the Ns is acceptable at this point, because of any changes. I mean, like anything, we do our best on legislation. It's not perfect, but later on, we do find out there's hiccups, or it was a loophole that was missed, and we can always come back and address it, just like any new products that come up that can hurt our community. You know, we address it once it happens. So I think, the longer we wait to try and get legislation passed to tax this product, you know, it's not good in every aspect of the word. So I think that we should just maintain the definition the way it is and move forward. I think also capturing the sales, capturing the taxes at sales makes sense, like Bistra mentioned, you know, all the issues that you can, from a wholesale perspective, and, yeah, and, you know, even, one of the things that we have, even Senators Perez and I looked at, is the use tax, and how we're, even the OPA has mentioned how we are missing out a lot on use tax. And this is products that's being mailed in, you know, not so much at, you know, the airport, you know, in massive amounts, but, you know, even the smaller ones. You can get someone who can mail this stuff in to their shop, and we miss it. They can be doing it once a month, and, but when they sell it, that's where, we won't miss it. So there's a problem with use tax and capturing that, so I think that doing it at the point of sale is a better capture of those taxes. So other than that, I appreciate, again, like everyone who said here earlier, what the Youth Congress has been doing. It's something I've been looking at since the '36 Guam Legislature, when you guys mentioned this back then. I remember that. And the reason why Senators Sinogosa and I moved forward on this bill, we didn't see another bill out, so we thought we would take the bull by the horn and steer it in this direction, and I'm glad that you guys agreed to that. You know, one bill is going to pass, you know, and I'm just hoping we take one that doesn't have so many amendments on it. But if it does, I think we're going to have a nice marriage between the two bills and come up with great legislation, what it's intended to do. And that is, you know, tax these products that provide this money, that provide enforcement, which is first and foremost to me, enforcing, and at the same time, deter those younger generations who, well, basically can't afford it. And we saw this when we raised taxes in tobacco back in 2009, and we saw that decline in the taxes that went to the Healthy Futures Fund. So I'm hoping this will have the same effect. Yeah, but we'll keep the education process going. And there is funding for, on both legislations. We both agree that education is very important, so. And I just to let you know that, I don't know if you heard it earlier, we decided to take the criminal side out of it, you know, I was talking, the author of the legislation on criminalizing, but we definitely want some kind of discipline action for those youth who disregard the law and think they can get away with it. And there has to be that type of, you know, either going to a program, or picking up trash on the side of the road, or cleaning our parks, you know, and it's called the Walk of Shame that we mentioned earlier, and I think their parents should stand right beside them, too. So, that being said, Madam Chair, I thank you, and thank you too as well for hearing both bills this afternoon.
Thank you, Senator Tadequie. I just want to also double-check with the Youth Congress regarding the recommendations by DRT. Do you agree with banning the use of vending machines as a...
Yes.
Okay.
It allows such easy access for youth, it is, yes.
Okay. And then in regards to the stamp tax, so if you're going, if you're suggesting that you prefer the point-of-sale taxation, do you still want to enforce the stamps, use of stamps?
Well, we will defer with Department of Revenue and Taxation, if that's a feasible approach. We're aware with the history of imposing a stamp tax when it comes to tobacco products, but you know, if we're crafting new legislation, trying to create innovative approaches, maybe we can revisit to see if that's a feasible approach.
Okay. And then, the, if I understand correctly, the taxation that you propose is that higher
We're not able to speak for the main sponsor right now, but to what we know, yes, this is a 40% excise tax that it is proposing, but we're not so sure how much higher it is then.
So you're proposing a higher tax in tobacco? Is that correct?
That was the intention, yes.
Okay. Thank you for those responses, and I would like to then, sorry, is there anyone else that would like to testify that hasn't done so? Okay, then I would like then to open the floor to Senator Shelton for any closing remarks.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to everyone who provided testimony today, especially to the Youth Congress, Department of Revenue and Taxation, and to the industry members who are here. And I welcome the committee work to address the issues raised today, to strengthen this bill, and maybe to adopt some of the suggestions that we have from Department of Revenue and Taxation, to see this bill move forward with the Guam Youth Congress. Situas Massey, Madam Chair, thank you.
Situas Massey, Senator Shelton. So the committee will continue to receive written testimony until 4:00 PM, Monday, February 12, 2024. Please address all testimony to Senator Sabina Flores Perez, Chairperson of the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research and Planning. It can be dropped off here at the mailbox, mailboxes at the Guam Congress Building, or email to office@senatorparas.org. The committee will now adjourn. This bill, 197-37, is duly heard, and we will now adjourn. The time is 4:02 PM. Situas Massey.